Okay, before we get started, Brian's just got a few rules. This is just part of the D and H, nothing else but the railroad station.
Okay, because we've invested in new members on the village board, we're putting the Roberts Rules of Orders back into effect. They have been in effect right along, but we just want to say the rules before we start. Okay, when you address the village board, please stand up and identify yourself. You don't have to stand up, but please say your name because some people know names, but some people don't. The purpose of this meeting tonight is discuss the railroad station only. So anything else, budget, anything else in the village cannot be discussed tonight. So please remember that. And this is something that we haven't really enforced, but we'd like to enforce it. No sidebar conversations. When somebody else is talking and we're talking, we're not listening. So we're missing part of the conversation zone. General rules of etiquette. You have five minutes to speak on the subject, but do not carry a conversation on. Please, we're asking you for courtesy. Don't carry another conversation on in the room, please, just out of courtesy. Every time we have a board meeting now, Mayor Baker has tasked me to go through the Roberts Rules of Order and state a few. We explained it the other night in executive session. These are the rules that we operate by. This is the law, so it's not discretion. So that's the only thing I have to say tonight. Thank you, Mayor Baker.
Okay, I guess this time we can turn it over to you, Melissa.
Okay, thank you. In terms of how you want to run the meeting, because we do have quite a group of people here.
Yes, we do.
Would you prefer to have us kind of run through our information and then take suggestions and questions from them? And then, does that, unless you wanted to go first to them for any suggestions? However you want to do it.
Oh, you're right. You go ahead, explain everything to them, and then we'll go through the session.
Okay, all right. So let's start off. I've got papers for you.
Oh, mine.
If really were these. Here's another one if anybody needs it. There you go. Okay, so, you know, as I thought about this meeting, the thing that I just kept coming back to is this quote from good old Senator Moynihan, a good New York liberal, who said that everyone's entitled to his own opinion, but not his own facts. And I thought that as we approached this, that's really the thing to remember. And I think it's a good rule just for us here in Rousas Point. The more we can get on the facts of a situation, I think the easier it's going to be to perhaps disagree over what to do, but at least to agree we have the same information. So my goals for today, make sure we have a common understanding of the facts that we have so that especially our new board members feel like they have the information that's available. That we agree on what else we need to find out, and that we have a plan to find those things out and move forward. So that would be what my goals are. What my goals are not is that the board's going to make a final decision tonight. There's just no way that that is going to happen. We will not have all the information we need. We already have, and I haven't even had a chance to talk to you, Bumble, because today was a real busy day for me scrambling to get this ready. Tentatively, we have DOT, the conference call on Monday, if you're available. And maybe Brian are available. Okay, so we have them lined up, and we're not even close to final decisions. I am not an engineer. My father is an engineer, but I don't even play one on TV. So I will do the best I can with Brian's help and everybody else's help with any details. Dick, thank goodness Dick and Benny are here. They sat through all this design. But my expectation is we're probably not going to get into the real nuts and bolts of the design. First of all, because we really, at this point, do not have time to change much. Anything that we change would once again have to go through everybody's review. So I think we have to look at more a matter of who's going to do what than really changing what's going to be done. It suggests not time for that. But we'll do the best we can, and of course, we're going to have our call on Monday. So that's when we can get questions answered on that. I would urge everybody as much as possible that we try to look at moving forward. I have a list of should've, could've, would've as long as my arm on this project. If I could go back and do some things again, I would. I can't, not any more than any of us ever can with the decisions we make in our lives. We're stuck with some of them, and we just have to figure out how to move on. So I would just encourage everybody as much as you can, and you probably hear me break this rule, but as much as you can to be looking to solving problems for tomorrow. And then the last thing is, you know, as I've said, I've had a chance to talk to the mayor and trustee Jefferson. This is a scary time for us. We talked a little bit about that at the last board meeting. But the wolf's not out the door yet. And the threats that we face, I do not believe are in this room. I think they're outside. I don't think there's anybody I'm looking at that doesn't have Rousas Point's best interest in mind. We may disagree on what that is and how to get there, but I don't believe there's anybody in this room that isn't trying to look out for what they feel is best for Rousas Point. So when the meeting's over, we'll go out in the parking lot, and we'll talk to and about each other, just like people always have in Rousas Point. And hopefully, move on from there.
You're going to be on the bad one.
Anyway, I just wanted to kind of set the stage because particularly, you know, the two new board members, you're coming in, you carry all the responsibility, and everybody else does building, and this is a big project to feed upon. So we're not going to hold anybody's toes to the fire tonight. Okay, so what I see is I basically see three options for the village board at this point. And I'd like to run through each of them with you. The first is really, it's the, I would kind of almost call it the nuclear option. Discontinue the project. And this was, you know, this was brought up from the, both the board and from the community the other night. Certainly, the pros are very clear. It gets all of us off the hook in terms of more time and more money. No doubt about that. The cons are, in addition to not fixing up our historic old train station, according to what I'm told by DOT, and you know, we'll talk to them about this on Monday, they're going to hold Rousas Point responsible for the design cost, the $164,616.57 that's been reimbursed so far. Now, I had a chance to ask today, has this ever happened? The person I talked to at DOT said there was a community that designed to the tune of tens of thousands of dollars. They had not been reimbursed yet, and they stopped the project. So they ate the design cost, so the state didn't have to go back on them. I said, are you aware of the state ever going after a community for the money? And this gentleman was not. See, one of the issues we've dealt with with this funding, this is typically road, bridge, trail building that DOT does. It's not typical to turn, to try to do a building. And we've been struggling with that from the beginning of the process. So that's what I have, but again, you know, this board has to feel comfortable that you have all the answers, so you get a chance to talk to them about that. Couple other cons that I think really do need to be considered. One is the relationship with our economic development partners. You remember that hot list I passed out? You know, Gary Douglas went to bat for you on this and got you a lot of money. And the village at that point had committed with $166,000 in match for the grants. So, you know, that is something that does need to be thought about. Again, I'm giving you my best advice. The other thing is the negative publicity for the village. My friends in Tupper Lake have been fighting a battle to get their add-on that Club and Resort project. And in order to do that, they've talked a lot about how hard it is in Tupper Lake. I know we face real challenges here in Rousas Point, but if we want people to come in and invest and open businesses, we need to make sure the message gets out that Rousas Point is a good place to invest your money, that, you know, we'll move forward, things will go on. And so I think we have to be aware of the implications beyond our borders with some of this stuff. So those are just things that I would ask you to think about for option one. And there, you know, there's no dollars and cents other than the amount to pay back. It's really more weighing of pros and cons.
If we go forward, we don't have to repay.
Correct. If you go forward, best case, there's no cash out to the village, and you don't have to repay what you got. So why don't we take a look at that option, which is option two, rebid according to the current plans? I don't know if any of you brought back this sheet, this packet? It started with my, I didn't run off my email that was on the front of it. I have a copy of that, so I can show you where it's at. This is what your packet started off looking like. It's a forwarded message from me, March 16th, to all of you. So if you flip that over, you get to the costs. And so, do you guys have them? No? And if anybody didn't bring them back, they can put theirs on. I have a couple left.
Well, we can, we get the copy. We should have.
You got one, Brian? This top one? You'll take that? Go ahead and take it. All right. Anybody need one? Okay. So now, this is, we put it out to bid, it came in too high. We worked and tried to get more money. And this is the rebid plan that has been approved by DOT. And it's with a few tweaks on the bid requirements and the plans and specs. It's pretty much ready to go. Okay, so here's, here's the budget breakdown. And the sheets that support the costs are those pages you find behind. That's what's behind it. So the estimated civil cost, $591, $515. Plumbing is $24,000. Mechanical, $85,000. Electrical, $75,000. For a total of $775, $515. So that's what we think the civil contract will come in at without the add alternates of painting, interior doors and trim, and the composite decking. So if you flip your sheet to this next one, the spreadsheet, the one that says civil, actually it doesn't say civil, but it is the civil. It's the longest one with a total of $654 at the bottom. Anybody with me on that? Here, well, then, I want to, I don't want to go through this until you have a copy, so. Can I, could I grab that copy back that I passed out so the mayor had one? And maybe Brian will give you that.
There's three or four copies if somebody wants.
Thank you.
Do you want to just?
There you go. Okay. All right, so we're looking at, if you flip that, the engineer's estimate, the first one has a total of $654 at the bottom. Brian, Arsen, and Carol, you guys with me? Okay. So this is for the civil contract. You see it, the subtotal $591, $515? Okay. That is the total that we, the engineer, has estimated it's going to come in at. Now, that is with the slate roof, roof and copper flashing. All right? We have down below, you can see a deduct alternate to replace slate with asphalt. I think that's ridiculously low. And what we're going to do is bid it as two options instead of this. Okay? So it's going to get bid option one, slate with copper. And if you look at slate and copper, you're looking at about $158,000 on these line items versus asphalt and I don't know. What do you use for some of the cheaper trim?
Architectural trim?
Yeah, so asphalt, we use the asphalt. Believe it or not, they didn't want the architectural. They want the pre-cha. But what do you use for flashing in that case?
Metal flashing.
Metal flashing, okay. So I believe there will be significant savings from slate, copper, to asphalt and metal flashing.
Should be.
So hopefully, we will see savings there. Okay, so that, we have to make sure that that is super clear. Okay, and then you can see there's painting, interior doors, and composite decking. So the idea is, if the contract comes in and we still have money left, so let's say the bid comes in at $500,000, okay, with asphalt and metal flashing, we still have some money to play with. So we can throw the painting back in. We can afford the painting. And maybe we can afford the interior doors and trim. And that's the way we work it through. But it's written so that we try to get the part of the building that needs to get done by the contractor done. So I know that is an awful lot to avoid. Is that, if you, if you look, the next three pages are the electrical, the mechanical, and the plumbing. And again, as we talked about, because it's a building, it's a WICS project, it has to go out in four pieces. Okay? Four different bids, right. Now, the funding that we have available at this point, we have $590,000 allocated for construction out of our Big ARA grant of $842,000. Okay? Some of that, we've, about 165 of that grant we've spent. We've got another almost $100,000 set aside for the construction management and administration because we have to have a full-time engineering inspector and all of that. So that is set aside. That's already, it's not showing here, but it's safe for you, okay, to use. We have $75,000 in construction from our HIG grant. The Historical Society has told us they have $32,500 for us. So what's left, the IEP, we expect to be able to use about $85,000 of that energy efficiency money. Total funding, $782.5 that we're looking at that we can use for construction. All right? Now, let me explain about the IEP. You will not, the window purchase cost is not included in the civil cost estimate. So I didn't put the $83,000 that we're holding for window purchasing either. Okay? We're telling the contractor, we're going to buy the windows, the village will buy the windows. They measure, they give us the stuff, the information to order, we buy, and then they install. So I didn't put, that cost is not showing on the cost side, so I didn't put it in on the funding side. So, okay.
It's a wash. You put it in, you didn't have.
It hopefully is a wash. Now, so wait, okay. We have, we have $85,000 from IEP to use, and we've already allotted for the $83,000 out of IEP? Correct. And I have a, I have a sheet for you on IEP that's kind of the next. And I didn't, Brian, I want you to have a copy of this, I think there's an extra for you.
I originally had one.
Okay, so needless to say, as we were doing this, I have, this camera behind. Let's just say there have been times when I believed that something could be done, and then assured that something could be done, and then found out that something couldn't be done anymore. So with this amount of IEP money, I wanted it committed. So there is your letter of commitment from Mike Lyons for the $168,000. Now, while we have a letter of commitment, here's what I see is the major gray area. The power, $21,000 of power authority money's in there, okay, in that $168. That has to be spent down this summer. That can be materials, that's insulation, and the labor, the contractor's labor for installing the insulation. So that, we're pretty, you know, we're pretty good on that. These other IEP items, we get, we have to ask the contractor to give us invoices for his material cost because we can only submit material cost reimbursement. So while the IEP is saying we have $168,000 for you, they're only going to be able to give us what we can submit invoices for. So I wanted to show you what is anticipated for non-window IEP items, and that's, those are the cost estimates on that other sheet. The split system air conditioner, fire line system, interior lighting, exterior doors, building insulation, and of course, that's, that one's going to do, and that should work out pretty perfectly. If it's eight for materials, it should be about 21 installed. So hopefully, that'll work well for us. The entry vestibule, venting the crawl space, and then the roof. And that's not, that's $25,000, sorry, that's the deduct. But anyway, you can see on paper, it totals well above the 85 that we're saying we can submit for. Okay? I think that's, then the rest is just that the notes are just an explanation of what I already told you. All right, so we have right now in the specs that the contractor has to submit his insulation invoices to us by the end of May. We're going to want to check and push that as far as we can with IEP because the end of May is left out.
They're actually waiting.
Okay.
That power authority money has to be done something with, quite soon, quite soon is right because they're taking too far for us. We've got to hold off another week till we talk to June.
Right. Well, now, and I want. I want to make sure that, I talked to Bill Berry and my clients on that.
Yep, that's true.
We need to make sure that they only allocate $21,000 of the money from the power authority. They wanted to do another 58, and I told them I would not recommend that because of this time pressure. Because by the time we get this approved again by DOT, out to bid, mobilized, I mean, it's going to be tight. So I don't want any more funding than we can. And they have, you know, they might, should be there for you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay?
We had two calls this week, Bill Berry in the last couple of weeks, and Mike Lyons also aside.
Good, good, okay. So that pretty much sums up option two, which would be, except that, again, I need to get the flashing changed. The copper to, we have to make sure the right flashing accompanies the slate and then the shingles. It makes no sense to put copper if you're going to have to pick it up, you know, 25 years later to fix your shingles. So, okay, so any questions on the re, what, where the rebid stands right now?
On the IEP money, you're saying that they're going to commit $168,000?
Right.
Now, the NIPA money that we have, $95,000, we have to spend that by a certain day.
Okay, right, but the NIPA is only supposed to be $21,000.
Right, but he wants to go another $56,000.
I wouldn't let him do it. I wouldn't let him do it if I were you. I would not let him do that.
We're obligated to spend that money.
But maybe spend it somewhere else?
That's why Dave Truro's coming next week. So that's another option, just not to muddle the water. Dave Truro's coming up to say, how can we spend the rest of this?
That sounds good, but I wouldn't want, I would not recommend that you let them do that with them, slide that to the train station because I don't want you to lose that. I mean, if we lose $21,000, we won't, we at least can get the darn insulation purchase and get that reimbursed. So you know you're going to get a good chunk of it. Don't let, and I haven't talked to him about that. So don't let them do that with this money.
On the IEP fund, I mean, you're saying $168,000?
Right.
I mean, that's going to pretty much deplete our IEP fund, isn't it?
I don't know. I don't have any idea what's in your fund.
You have like $152,000 in that fund?
Oh, it's a little bit more, I think. I think it's $192,000. You have so many numbers.
No, I don't know.
Ask Arsen, he didn't say. I mean, we talked to him on the phone, it wasn't $192.
But what I'm worried about is, we have outstanding bills out there for this installation, attic installation. I want to make sure that we don't run ourselves short off that IEP money.
Okay, and I have, I have no accounting on where that is.
Or rebates or anything.
Right, yeah, I don't, I haven't dealt with that, you know, that village accounting side. I just wanted to make sure that they were committed to this project. So checking that against your own balance is a very good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just quickly, this is the next step. Okay. Any, any other questions on the rebid plan?
How long is that going to take before you can put it out?
Well, if we, if we were to say, okay, this is fine as it, Urban Anthony is already changing the rebid based upon DOT's comments. I need the confirmation of you of the order you want your add alternates because that needs to go in. But if everything was to stay the same, I think it could go out in a couple of weeks. But, but then, I'm going to give you option three because I have a couple more recommendations. So Brian, you had a question?
Yes, when you're saying that we have the option to go from slate roof to shingle roof, I thought, I was under the impression that this was a historical building. They wouldn't let us do that? Or did they sign off on it?
They signed off. Oh, yeah, this has all been signed off on by SHIFA.
It was too expensive, and we said, hey, let's make it.
Yeah. And, and the only thing that hasn't been signed off on is the flashing because again, that's what I just came up with, but I am, thank you. But I'm confident that that'll be okay. That should just hopefully be a call. Okay, so that, that would be the rebid plan and the funding for that. Now, because this was all developed January, February, and this has been, you know, DOT has been reviewing this. When I got back from vacation last week, I had an email from DOT saying that, you know, this would be the last time that this could go out for bid, that the funding would not be available for the next time out, at which point I decided to say, okay, then what do we do? And so, I, the thing I would recommend to the village for consideration is also identifying other alternatives that could be done in-house if needed so that you get, you can get the building complete. And so that's my option three, which is to identify additional add alternates that could be done by the DPW, electric crew, or volunteers should worst come to worst, and the civil and electrical and mechanical and plumbing come in higher than your $785 in funding. So again, I wanted to give you what's already set out as alternates, okay? We have our option one, option two, and then we get into the taking out painting, trim, and doors and decking. And then I don't know what's best, and I don't know what, you know, I just pulled out some things that jumped out at me. I think this is where we need to take some time to look at the plans, but that, that's the only other thing I can think of to keep. It's kind of like an insurance policy is the way I look at it. If things really go badly, because you know, we can do these estimates, but it depends. Are the contractors already, you know, we have a handful of people that do this kind of work. I'll make, I'll call and make sure everybody sees this, and, but you did, just aren't that many contractors that do this? And are they already busy? Do they have private sector work that carries a lot less paperwork, a lot, you know, that they'd rather do? We just don't know. So we get, we open those bids. So.
A lot of information.
I have a question. Robert Clark, Rose Eble, Rousas Point, New York resident. I'd like to know if the village crew has to go in and do the working here, which is, there's not wrong with that. Now, do they get a prevailing wage because of the work? So, which means these guys that are, the village crew that's working here, that are getting $10 an hour, are supposed to get $40 bucks an hour. We going to pay them that $40 an hour?
Happily, we do not because we would not be submit, I, that was one of the questions I had to check out body after the last meeting. I asked DOT that today. If federal money was going to be used to pay our guys, we would have to pay them prevailing wage, but since we would not be submitting their time for reimbursement, then yes, we can keep them on their current salary. So that was one really good piece of news. Now, I also asked about reimbursing for materials that the village had to purchase so you don't have to put cash out. Let's say, I don't know, let's say you do, we do end up doing painting or trimming doors or whatever. What we are going to have to do in order to get reimbursed, and I have to find my notes on this because this was.
Enforce it all.
Well, we have to file a public interest finding waiver, which says that it is in the public interest for them to allow us to do this because it's going to cause the village of Rousas Point, taxpayers less, and ultimately, everybody less than putting it out for a contract. So that, that we would have to do. We want to do that fast. We want to do it for everything you identify as alternates. We don't have to use it, and, you know, we get great bids, then fine. But if we need to, that's what we have to do.
Ask for the waiver before we do the work.
We have to get the, yes, so then I said, okay, how long does that take? And there's one man down at the Federal Highway Association or Administration that has to approve it. So they said within a couple of weeks. So this is what, you know, if we're, as we work this through, I think it's going to take us a couple of weeks to get ourselves together. And then we have to get everything, you know, it's not, it should be quick. It's not changing. It's not really going to change the contract because it's cause it's still all there, it's just pulling out more ad alternates. But it would, if we go with option three and we pull some things out, it is gonna add a couple of weeks to the process.
Are you gonna have enough time to finish it?
Well, we have until February 2013, so.
Beginning or the end of February?
I don't.
Ten months.
I don't have an exact date. Isn't that Monday?
Yeah.
We get the date on Monday.
We don't want to have this too much.
I, I agree, right.
Myself, I'm gonna do all of that.
Um, so we need to get that hard and fast date.
You happen to ask what happens if we're doing our best effort to get this done and we just don't have the time?
What they have told me before is this ARA money, the federal stimulus money, it goes, it, it goes away. There is, there's nobody, there's no appeals on that, they, you all know they've been under pressure, cause they didn't spend it fast enough. That, that's a drop, this one's a drop dead, which is very unusual, cause our money usually isn't like that. We've extended things for many years, but on this one, that's what they're telling me.
No waiver then?
No, there's no, no, I think you'd have to go write to Washington on this one, and there'd be too many other people that, and the political, you know, of it.
Just adds to the time.
So, you know, again, if we can find a contractor that gets out to bid in May, and somebody's, wants to keep their crew busy for the next seven, eight months, we should be able to get the job done.
So those, actually, if they wanted to on this project right now, they could hire a couple, a couple of carpenters or whatever to do some work in and put them on payroll. Doesn't mean you have to hire them full-time, but they can hire them part-time and work them in there. I think it's a deal, right?
As far as I know.
I mean, you save, you're looking to save a few bucks here. And there are some guys, I'll tell you, pay them halfway decently, 20 bucks an hour to go in, real good, now you can do the work. Even, you know, instead of paying somebody 40, 50 bucks an hour to do this sort of thing, which means nothing, cause it all goes to vending towns. And a lot of them short, there's enough people around right now that would take a job like that and get in there and work.
So basically, if we don't use the federal funding, we can pay them out of our own village money and get some achievement.
Right, a, a, as far as I am aware in terms of the funding, now you guys would have to look at civil service and you're, and you bring people on temporary. That's not that unusual, so, but, um, what we're gonna do is we're gonna, you just have to be able to justify that, you know, we need to do this because the, we just can't get the project done otherwise.
Yeah, be your time, be your time period, be straight here.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's gonna be six months and like, you ain't just, there's no way it's gonna happen.
Uh, Bobby, I believe me, it scares me these things happen six months.
I mean, I mean, it's, it's, it's over shot, you know?
Yeah.
You know, this seems it can get done when there's wall school and, hey, now you're at the end of the road, you gotta, you gotta do what you gotta do.
Right. Oh, Brian, yes.
Um, Melissa, one question. You said that the contractors get paid as they submit their paperwork?
Right.
Wonder if they submit their paperwork after the February date?
I, I.
Is it our problem, is it our responsible to pay them if they don't get their paperwork in in the proper time?
No, see, no, we should, we're gonna have to make sure we write into that contract the, and first we have to get DOT to give us the date. And then we need to work it backwards. So if that's the last date to submit for reimbursement, what's our last date to get invoices? Okay, yeah, so that.
I just don't wanna hold an invoice after, after the fact.
No, at, last date and then sub, so you can get your money back, right? And then, you know, as I said, the one, the, oh, thing I can say, they do pay their bills very quickly. I mean, the money comes back fast, yes.
The warranties are all, you hold back 10% per year, but every contractor on a warranty, how's that gonna work with this type of money?
I don't know. We'll have to find out, it's a good question.
Also, that's how you, you make damn sure they did their job right.
Right.
10, or is it higher debt?
Could be 10, well.
Yeah.
Seemed like it was more if somebody did contract up, maybe it's less.
Cause that money's there, I don't know how that's gonna work.
Right, okay, and we'll add, that's a good question for DOT, how we deal with the retention, you should hold on to it.
And who's gonna eat this thing and everything else here?
The Village of Rouse's point, as far as I know, and, you know, actually, that would be another good thing to get the board. Um, when we first started the project advisory committee, as we waited for the contracts and everything, we worked through all of those issues and kind of an understanding between the Historical Society and the Village. I will pull that out and send that back out to everybody. So you have, you know, we, we got into who would own the materials that were there, who would cover the costs. So let me make sure I get that out to everybody.
We don't, and I hope, since it's our building and.
Yeah.
Yes.
I would say.
Yeah.
It's our next thing out here hanging.
Any other questions on the options? Or the, you know, the facts as they stand now? Okay, so what I have, somebody, anybody help me out here if I missed anything. We need to check the village IEP balance, make sure that, that this 147 isn't gonna break your bank on, on that.
I don't think it is.
Um, we need to check with SHPO and DOT and get approval on the option, the flashing for the, the asphalt. Um, we need to get hard and fast dates from DOT for the day the funding goes away. And then we need to work backwards, when do we need our last contractor invoices? Now, what we did, we put in liquidity damages when we bid it the first time, and we'll do that again. So basically, if they don't get the job done by the, the day they're supposed to get it done, they pay us the cost of getting the job done, so that, you know, they're, the contractor's stuck. Either get the job done or you don't get paid for the, for the work, so we'll, we'll write it that way, so we know it's protected.
Eight grand people in, work 24 hours a day.
That's right.
If they're that tight on schedule, I think, I mean, I don't know.
Okay, um, how do we deal with the 10% warranty issue? And I'll send out that Historical Society and Village understanding. Okay. So in terms of, I guess, moving forward, um, we have our 10 o'clock call on Monday. I'll confirm with them if that works for all of you. Um, maybe we'll use your office?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna get PA to sit in, I'll get Ray, our engineer, to sit in if he can. Um, the village will give, let me know about the IEP balance, right? You'll, you'll take care of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to start the build Monday morning.
All right, I'll work on the, um, the flashing issue, and we're gonna get these questions all answered and I'll send that out, okay? Then, um, do you wanna then after, or maybe even in between now and then, the, the, the village kinda together can look at all of the various elements of the contract and figure out what would be easiest and best for you to, to pick up if you had to?
Try to do in-house?
Cause I mean, I, this really is, I don't, we, we picked out the things that we thought maybe the vol, volunteers could come in and do, the painting, the trim, the deck, um, but I don't know what's best for you. And, and, you know, and again, like I've been telling you, you guys for months, we might have everyone, you know, there's a lot of goodwill that volunteers would be there. If they're not, ultimately, it's the village that's responsible and, and, you know, that, there's not much we can do. I'm sure we'll have a great, once that building starts getting done, you're gonna, I believe you'll have, and out for a good helping, but then.
Then I know one more question straight. What happens if all the contracts in the village arrive?
Well, th, this is why you, and, and you know what? That's why I wanna do as many alternates as we can to try to make sure it comes in within a reason.
But what happens if we don't? If they don't, if all the bids come way in high like they did last time, what happens to the one again?
Then the board is gonna have to make that decision about what to do at that point. Then you, you know, then the board, you, then you have to cross that bridge of.
Do we go ahead or go backward?
Exactly, now, there's still, I still have a couple of hopes potentially for more money that we would know about down the road. But, but I, you know, I don't, I, I can, I don't know. Um, and, but, you know, I think at that point, you have certainly, you make a very good case at that point to New York State that you have done everything in your power to get this building done. And, you know, you, you have, you, you get some good evidence to rock it with at that point.
So, just to play the other side, if we decide to pay the money back and we don't take any federal funding at all, can we on our own time and our village, our village budget, say this year we're gonna spend $50,000 in there, we're gonna replace the roof, we're gonna replace the outside, can we do that on our own and we don't have to go through all the approvals to get it done?
I, as far as I know, Becky, if you're not using any funding, it's your building, you, the only thing you would have to do, well.
Well, I have this girl who registered.
So if you're doing it yourself, you'd have to get the hazardous, the hazardous materials out of there, cause you can't, you know it's there, you can't have your crew in there unless they're sort of, have to do that, I believe, if I'm, I believe I'm right with that. So you, you'd have to have, pay somebody to do that.
Okay, then how can we get the village volunteers to go there and work in? What else, that's a, how does this material?
You, you can't, until, you can't, until that gets cleared.
That would be first, make it safe.
I thought, I thought Mr. Vitor took all that, how did it?
I have no knowledge of any, I have no idea, I, I.
I thought there was some in there, no?
I would, I'm sure.
Or he wasn't in there.
There probably wasn't, and we have, there's some now that's inventory that's on the, the assessment, but, but, um.
Brian, we're going in there, Brian, how do you take a look?
Brian, you and I are headed. I, I, I don't, we, you are exactly right though, and that's why we talked about maybe having the guys to the demos. But, but, um, they can't, because you get the lead paint and all that stuff, so. But we need to pay, if, the minimum we need to do is we need to pay a contractor, you know, they got us, I mean, and New York, they, they have you now. You can't do, even in your own house, if you find that stuff, you can't touch it, so.
Hold your breath in my house, so I'll do it. The hell with it.
Oh, no, you wouldn't, no, you wouldn't. It's illegal.
So, so in terms of next steps then, it's our call and our discussion in-house, and then hopefully by, you know, by next week, this is starting to firm up in terms of the direction that you all wanna take, okay? Um, 10 o'clock, if 10 works for you, I, I have them holding that, and I'll see if I can get the engineer lined up too. Okay.
Is that, obviously it's a telecon, we have telecon, we have telecon under the setup for?
I can, I can, um, we can use my free conference line, I can send that out.
That was a good idea, Bobby said, pay someone, somebody retired around town.
Let's keep some of the money up.
Robert Clark, Rose Evelyn, one other question on your building, you know, you're talking about, um, the asbestos or the paint that's in the building. Are you going to strip the inside of the building? Is all of the stuff coming off the inside of the building?
Yes, the only thing, Bobby, that, um, the turrets?
Yeah.
They're leaving the beadboard because it's so specialized, and the trim, and they are gonna try to save the, the, um, any trim as much as they can. But that was one of the things we got changed, was to pull the beadboard off instead of trying to save it.
Okay, yeah, which is fine, and, uh, but I'm just thinking here, because, you know, this getting rid of this in-baitment deal is, is, is gonna be very, very expensive. It's pretty well draining on that building if you wanna really get down to it there. Why don't you think about this? You got a local guy here that has a license. Let him put his career in, strip the inside of that building. Now you can put all the people you want in there to work, and the stuff is all gone, you're gonna tear that out, Dallas. Why pay an outfit from way down around New York City, he's gonna come up here and put the hammer to us? When we got somebody right here, local, he's got all the licenses, he's all set up for it, get a price from, let him strip the inside, save, save what you want. Get like Dick, go over with it and say, don't tear this apart, don't tear that apart, before they start, and then let him get in there, and you're gonna save yourself a lot of money, I think, going locally.
That would be one of those things that had we done that before we got into this process?
I know, yeah.
Now, it has to go with the WICs and it has to go to the GC, cause it.
Yeah.
And we, and you know, we talked, we talked about that, the problem was, we have the money to do that, you know, to get that done, so.
But, you know, it's, yeah. Just an option, the guy's here, you know, when you start rolling trucks from one point, you know, they wanna get their fuel paid for, their time on the road, blah, blah.
Oh, yeah.
This guy lives right here in the community.
You should hear the, I mean, the numbers, we have the numbers on that, and they are, you are right, I mean, in the cost estimate, um, excavation and disposal, roofing, ACM, caulk and glazing, um, thermal, and you're looking at 1934, 30,000 that we're planning on spending for a building that basically is clean. I mean, you know, for the most part, it's, it's, it's clean, but that's.
You know, you probably cut it way down.
Cut it half, probably.
I'll, I'll bet you, you mean less, if you, you know, you gotta, you gotta check on the price first.
And, and that's one of those things that with, you know, with the funding comes, you lose a lot of flexibility.
Yeah, oh yeah, well, no, just if you wanna get the project done, and you gotta find easy ways to get the thing up and running.
Right.
And one of the easy ways, you gotta get that stuff out of there, cause you can't put volunteers in there until you do it.
That's right.
So if you want volunteer help, first thing you gotta do is get that stuff the hell out of there, you know? You know, you're off, you're off.
You gotta see what's.
Right, Dick?
Make it safe.
You gotta see what's on walls for insulation.
You know, so if you end up in the position where you can't do it and the village chooses to go its own, then that would be the first year's expenditure for the village, is get somebody local in to clean it out and make it safe. Although, you know, I think even, and I think we all know, it's as safe as any of, I mean, it's.
Yeah, oh yeah.
There's nothing in it, hasn't gotten safe.
The thing is, you have to be licensed.
Yeah, you gotta be licensed.
You have to be licensed.
Right, right. Would you like to spend any time on your, the, the other, the, the 125 EPF grant to do the lights and finish the train station? Is that, because the contract's in on that one, so do you wanna, since we're on the subject, go through that?
I don't wanna know what's going on there.
All right, and before, I don't wanna cut anybody off, if there are any more things we need to be, think about or options?
Are we missing anything? You're like, Brian, you got any other questions, are you up to stuff?
It's gonna be fine, I mean, there's questions I can ask on Monday at our conference call.
And, and I'm sure we'll come up, I mean, it takes time.
There's a lot of information here that I could, I guess, go through with.
Sure, sure, and Carol, did we, do, oh, go ahead, speak then, I'm so sorry. I got chipped and sneezed, um, did you, I don't know if you had a chance to print out those plans?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I didn't, they didn't come through.
We have the full set of plans on computer, they can be printed out on 11 by 17, and if you want, we can even have a set overnighted up, so that you have the, the, the plan sheets. These are the last, these are the old ones.
Is it a PDF file?
It's a PDF file.
I'm gonna send it to my computer and I can print out the full size sheets.
Okay, so did you get the link?
I don't know if I got the link, last time I looked, it wasn't there.
Oh, he, he sent it to me, see what happened? He, we did this with a file transfer, and then it was, I went to get it today, and they shut the site down. So I had to get a roll of the engineer, we got it, but we'll get them to you, so you can have them on, on.
Carol can give you my email or?
Yeah, if, if you don't, if it's not waiting for you, Carol, give me a call, and we'll, we'll get that to you, so you can have all the plan sheets. Okay, so, so you wanna, you wanna spend just a few minutes on that? So that's another decision that, again, not tonight, but that is coming up. Okay, so just to give you a little bit of history on this one, this is the grant that the board applied for as part of the, um, what's called now the consolidated funding application or CFA process that the regional council administered last fall. The board voted, we knew we weren't gonna get the site work done at the DNH, we pulled that the first time around as a, as an alternate, and we, we not even putting it in this time. So we have a nice site plan for plantings in, you know, concrete, a little, the ramp, and the, the things that will finish off the part of the, the site that we own. And, um, the village board decided to use the planned work on Pratt Street to put, putting the lines underground as match for money from our friends at the Department of State Local Waterfront Program to finish the site work. So it's, it's a, it's a very similar project to the ones we've done down in Montgomery, where the underground electric and the ornamental streetlights will match the state money, that's the idea. So, um, the other part, we put in money for revitalization project management money, the money that you've gotten for the past few years from the Department of State to pay me or pay somebody else to help you with your grants and help you with business, um, new businesses and so on. So, um, here is the, kinda the key parts of that grant contract. Um, I sent Bumper the, um, the draft on Monday, and then just before. And then just before I left today, this appeared. This is the, the real copy that the village, um, can execute if it wants to go ahead. I have one copy for over there.
Keep that for the office.
Okay, thanks. And so, you know, you can see, it's called Advancing Rousas Point Downtown and Waterfront Plan Priority Projects. Three major components. Completion of the DNH restoration and rail gateway enhancement, um, which includes site improvements at the station, restoring a little bit of green space to the south, putting in concrete walkways, curving, landscape plannings based on previously completed designs. 'Cause we designed this as part of, the project advisory committee took what they gave us. We changed it around a little bit, so that's all ready to go in terms of having the design to put out for bid. Um, component two are the streetscape improvements. And this is installation of underground utilities and historic streetlights on Pratt Street and Lake Street. It says Lake, 'cause we're gonna pick up the ones you put in last year as match, too. So it's been done enough. We, I wrote in Lake, 'cause you guys put those in last year and we can use those. So the idea being that, um, that comes up to one hundred and twenty-five. And based upon what we spent in the past, I would expect that, you know, by the time you add up all the streetlights and the guy's labor and the wiring and the equipment hours, it'll come to one twenty-five. And then, um, the last item is what's called local capacity building to advance priority projects. Basically, that's what I've been doing for you in terms of administering the grants and, um, meeting with new businesses. It would this time be helping you with your micro enterprise grant, um, 'cause that's something new that we have. And then just all the, the, um, coordination with the regional council and the chamber and everything. So that's the work plan. There are about forty-five more pages of this that I can email out to everybody if you want it. Bumper has a copy already, so I can...
Yeah.
When is this? This one has a three-year, um, contract period. We're gonna backdate it, if you do wanna do it, to April of twenty-eleven, because that lets us pick up match from them. So the, in case we need to use the downtown streetlights. So you would have until April twenty-fourteen. But these are our friends down in Albany, and so they'll always let us bump a year if we need to. So this could, you could, this one has a five-year limit for the state, but they've extended those, too, so. Okay, yeah.
Robert Clark, yeah, good question. When, when you're talking about matching funds, you know, the project, let's say, for instance, Pratt Street. And the village sits down and they figure this whole thing out. And Brian basically got a number. And I know how his number worked out, 'cause I was there. But after listening to everything that you're, you're talking about here, can the village, instead of taking their numbers, use, use the prevailing wages numbers and throw that in and set the village number?
We can't use, we, we have to submit actual proof of payment. So we have to have the guy's timesheets in the file. And then the office does spreadsheets for me that totals up all the spending. We put in their benefits, and we, we can't, we can only submit what we pay out. So in order to get reimbursed for prevailing wage, we'd have to do that.
Yeah, no, no, and, and you're right, but that's not, that's not what I'm, we're not talking the actual project here. We're talking an estimate. When you're doing your estimates?
Right.
He can, he can estimate that just like he's out there. And whatever it comes in at, it comes in at. You, you understand where I'm coming from?
I do, but we, we only get the money back for what we actually spent.
Right, but if we estimate higher, the grant comes in higher, and then we'd spend less, we, we're cushioned.
Okay, well, the, the grants already, we, you, you, I mean, you could do that. Um, the grants, this one's already set in stone at one twenty-five. So, you know, we try, I try to go with what I think the village can match, you know? 'Cause the, these people are wonderful to deal with. They've been giving us grant money for better part of ten years now. So I like to, you know, let it straight. But what we do, Bobby, that's similar to that. We charge out equipment rates based upon Charps rental fee. Is that how you say it?
Charge.
Charp, Charps rental fee. So we charge out like, I mean, I'm trying to think, the line truck, we charge over a hundred, the backhoe, the skid steer, thirty-five, forty-five. So we do, we do pretty well on that one for our own equipment, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, that's, that's a good question.
Doable.
Yes, Ben.
No, not really, yeah. Uh, are we putting the same streetlights in on Pratt Street as down by the lake, sir?
Yes, that's the plan. In fact, they already have been purchased, is my understanding. And they're, they're here and ready to go.
I think you should have a higher streetlight myself. I don't think that the streetlights down by the lake show very much, no.
Not as bright as we thought they were.
No, very, very poor lighting. The lighting that they had on the main street before with the aluminum arm, or the rest of the, the rest of the village with the aluminum arms. If they had a longer arm, the whole, they'd go in the center of the, the road, what they make them and stuff like that. I think it would be, look better for lighting and stuff like that.
Yep, I don't feel, I agree with you, and they don't show much light.
No, I don't, yeah.
I ain't what's to tell you about the lighting.
I have, just a, you're saying that we have to match on the lighting. You're gonna use the downtown. You got sixty thousand dollars worth of fixtures down there right now. That's not counting man-hours or vehicle hours. So if Pratt Street does not go forward because of a few issues that we have?
Right.
Are we close to matching that one twenty-five?
Um...
If you're gonna use the downtown, the sixty thousand?
I, I think on that one, we have to check with Department of State. My sense is they're gonna say, you said you'd connect the railway station. And if the, the connection is the lighting. Because that would, if you look at what I wrote in the grant to sell it, it was, um, "The village of Rousas Point will complete the underground utility and installation of historic streetlights along Lake and Pratt Street to unify the village's central pedestrian district." So completion of the village's streetscape improvements will result in a unified design and visual connection between the waterfront, the train station, and the downtown. And so, they're very flexible, but I, I think that that's the link. The streetlights are the link. They're what links in the station to the downtowns. I think that might be an issue.
Are they, are they approved, the streetlights?
I hope so. They're on Lake Street, and DOT, I believe, approved the plan. I think we're all set with them in terms of the, the new plan, is my understanding.
Are they all breakaway streetlights and stuff like that, yeah?
I don't, Benny, I don't know. They're, they're the same ones we have.
Are they all breakaway streetlights riding, or do they...
They're composite.
Composite, there's some that.
If you hit them, you're not gonna break away the truck, but you hit them and take them down.
They held up quite well, I think.
What we need to do is make sure that the state signed off on.
Yeah.
And I don't...
I believe that they, the state had signed, my understanding was they'd signed off on the plan, that the revised plan, that, is it Ryan Davies down at, um, ESC did with the ornamental streetlights? That was my understanding. I think that, I believe that that is the case. So that would be one thing to check on, so that's a next step for the state.
How much George spend on the lights up on Pratt Street, you know?
Uh, there's a sixty-eight thousand if you're...
Sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight thousand dollars.
And the downtown must be the same or more?
Si, uh, downtown was sixty thousand.
Sixty?
Yeah.
Sixty-six.
One hundred twenty-eight thousand.
But we ain't gonna get back to state. It shouldn't be taken or matched pretty close.
And, and that, that's the IEP money was used to buy that. So we'll take the invoices and submit those as we've done in the past.
You know, if it don't go forward, we should be able to take, take that part of the money. You know, take it off our bill, at least.